We'll call this meeting to order the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for May 31st, 2022. We'll call Mr. Peter.
Layland.
Here.
Little. Schwartz.
Here.
Dralka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public? Don't see anyone here in the boardroom. Anyone online? Don't see anyone there either. Moving on to claims and payments, resolution.
This week's expenditures total $515,097.11. Jail commissary makes up $176,601. Secondary roads, $207,204. Sheriff's department, $54,314. And finally, medical examiner at $12,508. Everything is normal.
Thank you, James.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Dralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Last week, ISAC provided an update to us on the end of the session legislation in the Iowa House, the Iowa legislature, and I just wanted to report that House File 2130 was amended and passed both the Senate and the House. This would have been two weeks ago, Tuesday. The bill is amended, authorizes the use of all ATVs and off-road utility vehicles, ORVs, on certain public roads and provides regulations and requirements. The bill allows ATVs, ORVs, to be operated on primary highways to get between ATV parks, trails, secondary roads, cities, streets, and/or residents. The bill also allows for these vehicles' operation on unpaved secondary roads and on hard surface secondary roads if used as a connector as described above for primary roads or if approved by the Board of Supervisors. So this bill is now on its way to the governor for, you know, approval or unapproval, not approving it. So we'll wait to, I will work with ISAC and find out more information about this. In case the governor does sign it, we'll, we'll know what's going on and then work with some of the other department heads when we know more information. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I had nothing to do with it.
Smile off your face.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Orlando Lovelace, Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. As we get ready to wrap up the month of May, month of May is very busy for veterans in that standpoint, but just wanted to give you a couple of tidbits that our office has been doing. Last week, we sent out 13 widow gift baskets out to spouses who lost their loved ones this year. I suspect we probably missed one or two because we utilize the grave records that we get from the funeral homes or if a spouse comes into our office in that standpoint, we add them to the list. I will do that again and thanks for around the Christmas timeframe. But we've gotten already some thank you cards coming back in from them, just again to let the spouses know that they're not forgotten. When you look at what we just did over the weekend, it looked like we had an estimated 183 veterans come in our office this month. That's the highest total for the last six months. Thirty-three of those are new. Of those 33 new, 11 of them were from another county. So our, our month of May was pretty busy. We had opportunity to take part in the East High JRLTC graduation a week ago, and I tell you what, the East High JRLTC and the West High JRLTC really does do a lot of great things within the community and helps our office in a standpoint and some of our service organizations. So it was great to go out there and see those kids graduate and move on. Had opportunity to take part in the old German graveyard cemetery on Saturday. My wife was the guest speaker of that. It was an opportunity for us to get out there on Wretchen Road. I didn't get lost and, and to see that small cemetery. Also like to thank all the veteran service organizations and all the kind veterans and kind volunteers who sacrificed a little time out of their, their busy schedule to make Memorial Day such a scenic and ironic event. If you ride around in our county cemeteries, the field of flags is just a beautiful situation there. The unique thing that, that's humbling for you Landos to know that every flag planted is one of our war heroes that served our country and our county in that standpoint. But for our kind citizens to take time out of their day and the service organizations to go out and do that throughout the county, it was a great thing to see and a very impressive sight knowing what we do. Also wanted to brag about the parade. It was a huge success with our grand marshal being General Holtman, a World War II veteran, and also Commissioner Heidi Warrington, Chair of our Veterans Committee. She was also there. Just a great turnout in that standpoint to, in my opinion, from the kind citizens that lined the parade route to everyone that participated in that parade. It looks like we haven't had one in a couple of years and to come back and to give onus to where onus is due our veterans. I apologize for being biased for veterans, but that's just who I am. I'm sorry for that. But that's what you guys paid me to do in that standpoint. But a great huge success. The last two years, our elected officials like Senator Grassley and a few other ones, they've been out to post 49, but hopefully next year we'll try to get those guys out to see what we do here in Waterloo in that standpoint. Then last thing, Supervisor White, he read some names of our fallen and I could tell you that myself participated in about 65 of those funerals for those fallen veterans that he read yesterday. You know, with the four months of just a humbling feeling when you, you read those names and then you walk those grave sites. Lastly, he mentioned about suicide and we had another veteran actually take his life last week. It's so important that veterans understand that our office is there. We're not mental health, but we have resources to get them to where they need to go, whether it's Black Hawk Grundy, whether it's the VA, whether it's Allen, whether it's Mercy One, we have a lot of resources. And Orlando would never play some counselor. That's not me. I stay in my lane. I'll try to get the veterans where they need help, but it, it does affect, to include myself, when we see a veteran take his life. It makes you wonder, where was I? What could I have done better in that standpoint? So it is very important that our office has a, a solid representation, a solid rep, you know, and, and be an ear for our public that is hurting in that standpoint. One is too many, as you guys know, in that standpoint. Unfortunately, it happened over the Veterans Holiday, Memorial Holiday. But get to work out that we're here to help in that standpoint. We'll be a listening ear. We'll try to tie them to the right resources. We have the DOM in Des Moines, which is, and we have one in St. Cloud, two hospitals that we've recommended veterans go to. We've had good success in getting veterans in those facilities for help, but just wanted to mention that as we go forth in the next year, we want to try to limit situations like that in that standpoint. Stand by to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Orlando.
Thank you.
Any other ones? Oh, morning. Miranda.
Morning.
Morning.
Amanda Fesmire, Human Resources Director. Just wanted to, quick reminder, or just give a quick reminder about open enrollment. Today's the last day, so any staff that need to submit any changes for their health insurance outside of a qualifying event or sign up for flex spending, please get that to Human Resources today. We won't be accepting any of those late, late changes. So just a quick note on recruitment. We are working really hard to fill the large amount of vacancies that we continue to have and spread out all of our offices and departments. One thing we're noticing with some resignations is that people are looking for remote work opportunities. We've had about four recently leave to go to the state for remote work or flexible work schedules. Another two leave for more private sector remote work. So that's something that I brought to the attention of the department heads during the last monthly meeting, I believe. So as to whether or not there is any kind of interest in exploring some kind of remote work program here at the county. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that, that we are going to be rolling out some survey data or trying to collect some survey data from the departments as to whether or not that is feasible. But other than that, I'm just giving an update on, you know, the various things that are going on in here for any questions with regards to recruitment.
Typically in a year, how many employees do we lose?
So over the last five years, on average, it's been about 50 to 54.
And how many so far this year? 30?
Over 30. Yep. So we lose about five every year, or five every month. So right now that we're trending that way. For every, um, five of those separations, one of them typically is a retirement. So. And that's across, I know we've often talked quite a bit about the law enforcement division, but that's really starting to go beyond law enforcement here for the county. It's going into the attorneys, into public health, into clerical roles, into the engineering staff, so dispatch. So it's been, you know, something that we're continuing to work on and to try and position ourselves competitively, whether that be through wages or benefit offerings or other programs. So.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else? Hearing none. Have the minutes approved for May 24th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Dralka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next to the resolution at the reimbursement agreement between Black Hawk County Northern Natural Gas Company for facility access modification as part of the Grundy Road grading project be approved and direct to chairs assigned for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. This agreement, we've been speaking with Northern Natural Gas about this for many months. Their legal staff has really been the holdup. This agreement allows us to make a few changes to the site that's out on Grundy Road because we widened the road and their facility out there is, is too close to the road. The fencing is too close to the road, so we are moving the gate access into the facility. And the contract cost is $4,310. I believe Mike has, has reviewed the contract now and it should be ready for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Dralka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Thank you, Kathy. Other business. This is a resolution at the amendment number one to the Black Hawk County Fiscal Year 2022 Secondary Roads Budget be approved and direct to chairs assigned for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. The amendment reflects changes made and approved in the county's budget amendment on May 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Kathy?
This is just a formality. As you know, when we, when there's an amendment made to the county budget, we have to do the same amendment for, as, when it affects our budget and submit that to the Iowa DOT.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Dralka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is discussion possible board action on ARPA committee recommendation for consultant.
Uh, the, the committee, the committee's recommendation, excuse me, has, has not changed from last week. We are still recommending Baker Tilly be approved by this board. And we can address any questions. There's really no updates other than that.
Well, I appreciate that. I say, I think Grant did some work with the base camp, although I don't know that there were any more responses, Grant, than by this morning. And, and then also the work that you reached out to several others, counties. So I appreciate that. I guess when I looked at that, I, and I wondered if they maybe provided you just additional information. Some of those obviously were using in-house people. Others were contracting or talked about looking at potential consultants. Did they provide, anyone looking at Baker Tilly, I guess, or is working with them, or was there anything?
So Scott County works with, so Baker Tilly is their outside auditing firm for Scott County. And so they, they had raving things to say about Scott County, so, or about Baker Tilly, excuse me.
I view it as an insurance policy for the county to protect these assets we've been entrusted with.
Yeah, the consultant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just, I think.
Most definitely need one, I feel. Tom or Chris, any comments?
Uh, no. I stand with what I said last week, that the proposal, quality and detail and the, the quality of the tools that they've developed from Baker Tilly, whereas the other proposal didn't have any of those tools developed, I think it's going to really help us out a lot and, like Dan said, be that insurance policy. And I really like that they have, they have like a whole database of all the projects that they've already gone through that we can compare. R2 for similar ones to, as we develop the justifications for them and stuff. So I really think that they're providing a, a good service and they've got good tools that they'll be providing us.
I'll make a motion to accept the ARPA committee's recommendation for consultant.
Oh, second. Moved in second. Further discussion?
I do have a question as far as what would be next steps. I know we talked about, you know, working with the board and forth, and the board really hasn't had, as far as I know, any conversations. I don't know, maybe some of the board members have with Baker Tilly, other than Chris. And Chris, I don't know, did you talk with them as well?
I have not had a direct conversation with them.
I was just curious what next steps are, what you see as next steps.
We have a meeting today with the committee. We will be reaching out to Baker Tilly and we will be getting a contract in place and then we'll, it'll get before this board to sign the contract. So as far as the process goes, I would like to have a conversation with them as well as the committee, just check in and formulate that and put that recommendation forth before this board too as well, when that contract comes in place. So.
Um, I assume, do they meet with the board? I mean, in some of the earlier conversations that you had and talked with them on.
We didn't discuss whether they were going to meet with the board. I, I assume that could be arranged if, if it was desired.
Oh, and well, yeah, I'm sure. I just wondered if there was like any interaction with us or how that would work.
I'm sure there will be down through the process sooner or later.
Absolutely can be.
I was, yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think that process is something that we had kind of talked about last week. The process is going to be what this board desires. So if you would like this, if you would like Baker Tilly, you'd come before the board, that's, I'm sure that'd be just fine. So.
And they'd be available for board contact and questions, of course.
Right.
And I see the maximum that they had set in there, I think, was $100,000 so that we have up until that to utilize. What was the timeframe again? Is that over this course of the whole ARPA?
Yes, correct. So they, they're actually looking at March of 2027. And that would give us time to submit that final expenditure report from, through December of 2026, when we have those, when we're allowed to expense the ARPA dollars.
Well, I know. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tom.
Does the contract allow for any increase of that $100,000?
Uh, not before it goes to this board. It is, it is going to be billed on an hourly basis at $250 an hour and it's up to $100,000. So I don't foresee this getting higher than $100,000, but if it were to, then it would need to come before this board, before that happens.
And there's contract language that states that?
I don't know that there's contract language in the current format that states that, Mr. Little. However, uh, there is contract language that states not to exceed $100,000. So that by its nature requires that the parties renegotiate any extension before it goes beyond that amount.
So the, uh, do I understand then the contract's going to be on the agenda next week?
I would imagine that it would be. At first, they have to agree to a change I'm going to be recommending that I, I believe I mentioned in an email to the board.
Will the board see the contract prior to going on to the agenda next week?
Uh, yes. Board has already seen it in its current form. Prior to it going on next week, my anticipation would be that we would have a, an amendment in place on it and that I would also get that to the board before we have, before it's either, if not before it's on the agenda before the meeting next week.
So, and I'm just assuming we might be in a predicament where it could go over 100,000. I know, James, you and I talked a little bit a couple of weeks ago and you said you thought we'd probably try to keep the services for the most part at a minimum and there would be certain things that we'd require them to assist or I guess we'd like them to assist and others that not. But if we get close to that 100,000, I guess, and it's a critical time for us, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll just have to play that by ear, I suppose, and, and keep this board up to speed on how many hours we've used and, and where we're at as far as that, the contract goes.
Some of those meetings be in person.
First parade. I'm sure they've done stuff like this before, so.
They seem very well, very, very, very well rehearsed in this.
Not many have done art, but yeah. I was gonna say it seemed, now, some of those will be in-person meetings or no?
I would, I would believe most of them would not. I'm not sure that any of them would be in person.
Yeah, I don't believe they would be. They are extremely available over Zoom and they are out of Kansas. So I would prefer not to have it in person only because that's, again, more hours on the road and expenditures that were going that way. So I would rather use those dollars for just consulting services rather than travel expenses.
Well, it sounded like some of this was like educating, like I said, client leadership, staff and other stakeholders. So I just, I wondered if that was via Zoom or if it was in-person meetings or whatever we were going to need.
We'll also need to have a conversation about the scope of what they plan to do. One of the things that I feel as, as the proposal is so high is a lot of the educational piece. If we feel like we would like that, that's, that's fine. We can move forward as is. If we feel like we're just really going to be taking away the educational standpoint and, and the foundation of the ARPA and really just taking the projects that we've already agreed on and giving them to determine an expenditure category, I, I believe that would, that's, would knock the, the cost down quite a bit. Again, that's the, the space needs assessment is something that I would like them to kind of look at and see what's, what's eligible and, and just kind of move forward that way. So I don't know, I don't know how, how much educating they'll need to be, especially if, if we do plan to use a lot of these dollars for this, for the space enhancement study, that'll just have to be a conversation the board has.
And to address the question about in-person versus online, my understanding was that this was going to be via webinar or via Zoom type meetings.
Any other questions?
Not right now. Thanks for all the work. And we still keep the committee intact and everybody's still working from our standpoint. It's just with this additional kind of stamp of approval or assistance, I guess, in, in the approval process, correct?
That's how I see it.
They're like the point man for us is what they are. So I, I'd rather see them, you know, see us get the stuff to them, get the approval from them so we can, like we, like I said before, hit the ground running.
It'd be, it's, it's also nice to be able to kind of funnel the, the questions and concerns to the consultants from various department heads. If we have any or, or if the board has any, then we can kind of work through that as, as well. So, uh, yes, I do foresee this committee still being a key part in this process.
And some of those first projects, I guess, will be the 101 that have been approved that we kind of want to go back and recapture or whatever. Okay. Thank you.
And among the, the earliest, there's at least one project for conservation that they anticipate bringing before this board, I believe on June the 14th. So if, if indeed the, we have entered into a contract with the, with a consultant by that time, I would anticipate that would be the first one to go through them.
About previous approved projects, Lynn, I didn't hear your comment. Are they gonna go through the process again?
So, Tom, to answer that question, what I foresee is taking the projects that we already have and, and sending them to the consultants to make sure that we do have the correct expenditure category. So as far as an approval process, that would be up for this, for this board to decide. But for eligibility determination, I do foresee this consultant looking at all of the projects that we have approved thus far and determining eligibility.
Have we, have we spent any of the money physically of ARPA money that's already been paid out?
We have. So there's a few, there's a few IT items that we've purchased that's, that, yeah, so, so we've expensed those. Those, again, those are, I would, I would say concrete, but, but I don't necessarily want to get ahead of myself. So if, if we do have an issue with any of the expenditures that we've already expensed, then, then we'll address those as we, as we go forward. And then the space enhancement study that we do plan to use out of lost revenue anyway. So.
Do you have a dollar amount on what we paid out so far?
Uh, not in front of me, Tom, but I can get that to the board.
I, I do, Tom. I looked at it, I, I guess about a week ago and it was $450,000 at that time and we're probably lagging a little bit from now, but yeah.
If, if that goes before a consultant, those projects that we spent money on currently, would the board have to pay that back out of county funds?
No, because anything that's, anything that we've already expensed, in the absolute worst case scenario, we can use out of lost revenue. So, and, and most of those dollars that were expensed are out of lost revenue. So we wouldn't, we would not need to expense those out of, out of county dollars.
We, we could have actually, but that limits us, like by using the lost revenue, we don't have to do that, correct? But it limits some of the dollars we might have available for other projects.
Yes. If, if, if we had, if we had expense dollars that were supposed to be for or under the ARPA guidelines and if they were determined not eligible, and then we would, yes, we would have to shift those over to lost revenue.
Since we're not willing to do it out of general fund.
I guess.
I mean, that could be an option if we wanted to.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Thanks, James.
Yep.
Questions? Hearing none. Do you have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Dralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is any information or reports from the board?
Supervisor White and I this morning interviewed a P and Z committee candidate and we're going to recommend that he be put on the agenda, John Brundjoret, next week so the whole board could consider his involvement. We were impressed.
Yes, we were. And to top that off, I'd like to take my hat off to, like Orlando was speaking about earlier. Garrett Gingrich gave the speech yesterday on, at the Memorial Hall service and Memorial Day service, and it was outstanding. It hit, he hit the nail on the head several times about Americans working together. American, we, we are Americans. We're not, we've got a wedge between us right now and it's time we get rid of that wedge and start working together. We see it at the city level, the county level, the state level and the federal level and it's got to go away if we're going to move forward as a country. We got to work together and get things accomplished. Gave a wonderful speech. It was heartwarming and it was also, it hit home quite a bit with losing your comrades and stuff that, at a time that it shouldn't have happened in, in reality, that, you know, that they die in the line of duty, stuff like that. And then the one, the one, like we talked about at the ceremony, the young soldier that left a two-year-old and a two-year-old baby and a, um, still, one still in the womb, four, five months, she's five months pregnant with her second child. So. she's five months pregnant with their second child. So it's not, it's not an easy task for soldiers. It's, you, you get the, you got the stuff in your head, and that, it's like Orlando said, it's, uh, that's why we got the people in place that can take care of that problem, and you go talk to them and help alleviate the problems and keep you from having the bad dreams or the, the bad thoughts or whatever, whatever it might be. And the, the more we work together, the better off this country's going to be. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.